Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Milton Planning Board for Thursday, October 8th, 2015. This is our seventh meeting of the fiscal year. My name is Emily Innis. I'm the chair. I'm going to ask the other members to introduce themselves and then I will run through tonight's agenda before we get started.
Alex Whiteside, member.
Brian, sorry.
And Julia Gettman, sir.
Brian, board member.
Great, and we've got a couple of other people on their way. So let me run through what we're going to do tonight. We're going to hold on the past minutes. I've got a backlog sitting on my email that I need to go through, so we're going to take those up as a bunch at our next meeting. Next meeting dates, October 22nd, October 26th, which is town meeting, November 12th. And then before we leave tonight, we need to talk about the meetings for November and December because currently we are scheduled to meet Thanksgiving Day, which I'm guessing is not going to happen. Yeah, exactly. And we're also scheduled to meet Christmas Eve, which I suspect is not going to happen. So maybe the last item we can take up tonight at those meetings. We're going to do Citizen Speak, and there will be a special Citizen Speak for 333 Brushhill Road, so I'll explain that in a minute. Under New Business, we have an A and R for 44 Forest Street. We're going to take that up first. We have some Continued Business, 333 Brushhill Road. We're going to be deliberating the draft site plan approval tonight, and as part of that, we will have a special Citizen Speak when we get to that point. So anybody who is here to speak to 333 Brushhill Road, don't speak at the normal Citizen Speak, speak when we get to 333 Brushhill Road. Thayer Nursery, we are continuing our deliberation of the conditions for that special permit and site plan approval. And then we will also have a brief discussion of the zoning articles for the October Town Meeting and beyond. So that's where we're going tonight. We're going to start with the A and R for 44 Forest Street, assuming everybody is here for that, and then we are going to move on to 333 Brushhill Road and then to Thayer Nursery. So with that, the A and R for 44 Forest Street. Welcome. Introduce yourself.
Hi.
Yeah, just bring that up.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Joe Webby from Webby Engineering. We're presenting a plan tonight that we believe doesn't represent a subdivision under the subdivision control law. The applicant owns these two lots on Forest Street and wishes to reconfigure the interior lot line of those two lots. You can see the small portion that I've indicated is orange. Here was a portion of this lot that was going to be attached to this one, and then a larger portion of this lot here, which would be combined with this lot here. The resulting lots have the required frontage and the required area for an RA zone, and we believe it's an A and R.
Okay. Any questions from board members? Bill, did you have anything that you wanted to?
Would you explain what all these parcels are? I mean, it seems to me you've got one big parcel now. Is that right?
No, it's actually two parcels under one certificate of title.
You've got two parcels.
Yeah, maybe just... So if you could just outline for us exactly the current and the proposed.
This red line here is the current lot line between these two parcels. We're taking a portion of Lot 3A and we're combining it with Lot 3B, and then we're also taking a small portion of Lot 3B and combining it with Lot A.
So the purple hatching there, that's becoming part of 3B?
Parcel.
And the sort of pink color is becoming part of 3A, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
There's only two parcels, safe and clean, 3A, 3B.
There's parcel A, there's parcel N12, 3B.
No, here's his new numbers. Here's the new area. Here's the new area. This is where it started. These are the numbers that started. These are the new parcels. These are existing.
This is...
This is current.
Well, I mean, the parcel seems fine.
Yeah, parcel A and parcel B are the parts being relocated, correct?
It just changed.
Into the larger... Right, understood.
Parcel B, bigger.
Parcel A is what's represented by the orange, and parcel B is what's represented by the purple hash.
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Well, the lot lines indicate that both are... I don't... I think it's what you've done is confusing, but I'm going to, since the lots are conforming however you've done it.
All right.
It's all right with me.
Brian?
I'm fine.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I... My move that we authorize Mr. Clark to endorse this plan is not requiring subdivision approval.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Where did this come from?
That was mine.
Oh.
So in my hurry to get to the A and R, I forgot to ask if there were citizens who did... wanted to speak to something other than 333 Brushhill Road. My apologies. Is there anybody who wants to speak to us on anything other than 333 Brushhill Road? All right, if not, we're going to move to that. So on 333 Brushhill Road, the public hearing has been closed already. At our last meeting, we had a number of citizens who wanted to speak at Citizen Speak, and we invited them to come back to speak. I mean, obviously, we heard them then, but we invited them to come back since the decision was going to be discussed... the draft decision was going to be discussed at tonight's meeting. So although this is not a public hearing, we're going to run it fairly similarly to the public hearing in that we're going to have the applicant give us an update on what has happened since our last meeting. We understand from some comments he made at the beginning, right before our meeting started, that there have been some changes to the plan. Alex has written a draft decision, which we're going to be discussing, so he's going to let us know what's changed with the plan. I'm going to let the board ask questions as we would do for a public hearing, and then I'm going to invite those who are here to speak tonight to speak to what they want to say about this, and then the board will move into our deliberations on the draft decision that Alex has written. So that's how we are going to work it, and I think the applicant is setting up now. Great, excellent. So, and then these plans that are being distributed now are the ones that have changes on them, and you're going to walk us and the public through those changes, is my understanding, so.
Do you want a big set or a small set?
Ah, big set's fine.
The same as yourself.
Yep.
I'll share. Thank you.
Is he wearing the F3?
Ready, have a set.
You've got one. Wait. Oh. Yeah, I'll have the big ones. I'll stand up and grab it.
All right.
Stand up here and describe.
Yes, please.
For the record, my name is Frederick Isel, a professional civil engineer working with Civil and Environmental Consultants. I'm here with Ken Buhar from Civil and Environmental Consultants, and Mr. McKenna is in the back. At... There was a site visit, a site meeting, and we were requested to add a few things which we didn't have in terms of details on the plans. The gas main connection, which we have, our road, access road, and it comes down parallel to the existing sewer line, so it's following the same path that we'd already be using and connecting to the gas main. Very simple, straightforward. We're asked also to put in the underground electrical telephone cable utilities, which is basically conduits which run along the side of the road servicing the houses, again connecting into existing facilities. Most significant change we made in the plans was to relocate the underground infiltration basin to save a number of specimen trees, which are in the foreground in the area, and we've shown those trees on this plan here so we can illustrate that the detention basin or infiltration basin used to be further up this part of the property and would, because of grading and, you know, the actual installation of infiltrators, would have to remove those trees. There was a couple other trees further down, a 16-inch and a 30-inch tree, which, because of grading, would be lost, and we've changed the grading and revised that and moved the structure so we'll be able to save all of those trees. And that the detention area would be slid further down the hill, further away from the other houses, further away from the roadway, the driveway. We still have the detention area on the uphill side, 40 feet away from the nearest property line on the corner, and again, everything is, in terms of stormwater, is flowing in this direction to the northwest. And the far side, it's over 50 feet, 52 feet from the property line, and again, the direction of flow is down in this direction here, so it's still substantial distance from where flow might be, you know, overflow. And we're only looking at the 100-year storm as being in overflow. In all situations, all small storms, all storms up through, including the 25-year storm, would be contained within this area with no overflow. The overflow, as we had described before, is in a level spreader, so it discharges out the side and goes down to basically a long trench, the length of that, and then basically dissipates over a long length. And I think those are the only changes. We did make a couple changes in between the contours and around the houses so that we could, again, save more of the specimen trees, and we were requested if we can do some work to, while we're in construction, you know, move something around a little bit.
Move the...
The board.
They said, we've all got plans. We don't need to know. The other way.
Okay, well, I have one. Face the other way, but I'll face it this way here, too. So...
What?
That doesn't look like...
Oh, they've got one. Oh, okay, that's good. Now, why don't you show where the water line's going to go? They're all within the development, right?
Yes.
Now, you just, with your finger, trace, show the water line, show the gas line, show the electric line, show the cable.
Okay, let me try to get all the way.
And make clear that the Beacon Street, what's called the unbuilt portion of Beacon Street, is not going to be touched.
No, where the water line and... Yeah, just the water line connects into the... Where the existing water line is on Beacon Street, at the end of the unbuilt portion.
But it exists.
It exists. It exists right here. We're going to tap into that and run it down through this property, down to service the all the units. It's going to connect back up as a loop so we don't have a dead end water line, connect back up to the existing water line, which runs between Beechwood 1, 2, and 3, and Brushwood House at that location. The gas main will connect to the existing gas main, which is on here, nowhere near Beacon Street or anything in that location, it's connecting out towards Brushhill Road, where the existing line is, and go into the property to serve the property. The sewer will be connecting into, it's a force main from individual pumps from each house, connecting in and pumping out, connecting to the existing sanitary sewer, gravity sewer, which is out in this location. The underground utilities will connect to existing utilities that dead end here and connect around off the side of the roadway, connecting to each of the houses. These are the electrical telephone cable conduits. They're, you know, plastic conduits in the ground. That is pretty much it for the utilities. Stormwater is all self-contained, collecting stormwater from catch basins, running into from both sides of our drive, connecting it to here and treating it, and then discharging it to infiltration basin located in this area.
And show the construction entrance where the construction vehicles will use.
Right, be on the... Off of the existing drive, there'll be a construction there with, which made with large stone, crushed, you know, crushed stone to be able to knock any dirt that may accumulate in our tires or truck tires off of there to be... And then to be cleaned out as necessary, but keep that so that there won't be... Construction vehicles will not be tracking material off-site.
And they're going to access from Smith Road, is that right?
I don't see... Yeah, I don't see Smith.
I don't... Does that have a name? I guess it's between Beechwood and the Beechwood 1 and 2, 3, 4. Is that Smith Road? I'm sure I'm coming in. It's coming in. Smith Road.
Straight down. It goes around... Let's see, sorry. Sorry. Sorry 1 and 2. Hooks around, and then it goes right into the existing drive. It's a straight shot. If you go to page 1.
Okay. Smith Road comes around. This is Smith Road on here, right?
Smith Road.
Right.
Comes in, goes like this.
It goes in through...
Here.
Okay, right. Right down through here. Okay. Right, okay. I'm sorry. Smith Road. And it ties right to here. That's Smith Road.
All right. Questions from board members?
The unbuilt section of Beacon Street is not going to be used for anything. Is that correct?
Uh...
Other than the fact the existing water main...
Main is there.
Is there, but nothing else is proposed for it.
No.
Nothing.
Nothing, no. No.
Mike? Anything from you? Brian?
I don't have any questions.
All right, so what I'm going to do now is I'm going to open it up to public comment. Standard rules apply, which is, please come forward when I recognize you. Speak into the mic. You'll see there's a new... We've been having some sound problems, so you'll see there's a new instruction card up at the front there. State your name and address for the record. Direct all your questions to me, and I'll see that they get answered, and no cross-examination. And please, who would like to speak first? Anyway, I saw his hand first, yours, sir, in the brown jacket. Yep, and then I saw Jeff. I saw you next.
Thank you so much. I'm Tom Denly. I'm from 16 Beacon Street Circle.
Please have a seat, yes.
Tell them about the two microphones.
I did.
Move the handheld one.
I'll put them both together.
No, no, you can only do one at a time. Bill, can you grab the handheld? Or you use the handheld.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm 16 Beacon Street Circle. I'm the one who asked you, please, to write that letter.
Yes.
Okay. I heard this gentleman, as an engineer, quote, "100-year circumstances." I think right now we have too many 100-year circumstances. We just went through a winter of too much snow. I mean, if they have worried about 100-year, just think of South Carolina right now, all over the place. They can't work with 100-year because we're going through climate change. Working with those type of numbers, they're out of date. 100-year numbers are long since out of date, and if he's worried... Has he given us any reason that thinks that he thinks this runoff water is going to go down our hills or whatever? We don't really want it. These people from Brushwood wanted to insulate themselves behind their fences. We don't want them coming into our small area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeff, you're next.
Thank you, madam chair and members of the planning board. My name is Jeff Wilkinson, and I live at 199 Beacon Street, and I'd like to start by thanking the chair and member Whiteside for your help over the course of the last week, and generally for the board's responsiveness to the concerns we brought here last week. It's extremely heartening to us to see the quality of listening and the quality of response, and we're looking to forward to hearing a little bit more detail about the plan the board will be considering. I have two questions. Perhaps you could interpret Mr. Denly's comments a moment ago into a question. I think some of us share the question of what does 100-year storm mean, and is the board satisfied that the plans that they are proposing for drainage satisfy what is, you know, probably a good point that we were into a new normal? So are you satisfied that the provisions they're proposing are adequate? And secondly, we've heard and we appreciate the humor that nothing is going to be happening from the Beacon Street dead-end side, but could you explain to us in a little bit more detail about what it means that the water main stops there? My understanding from communication with Mr. Whiteside is that whatever tie-in will be required will be happening from the Brushwood side, and that we will not experience any construction even for the water main tie-in from Beacon Street. But could you explain that or have that explained to us in more detail? Will they be running tractors or other construction equipment in from the Brushwood side right at the end of Beacon Street? What... How does that work? How does... Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Now, normally, I try and collect all questions before having the applicant respond, but I think in this case, a lot of you are going to have the same question. So I'm going to ask you first to describe your drainage calculations, how you are dealing with the new normal, and what you mean by 100-year storm and how you're dealing with that. And second, also, talk about the water main tie-in and how that's going to be accomplished.
Well, we have basically accommodated the new normal. Just a few years ago, the 100-year storm was measured in a 6.7-inch storm event. It has now been increased to 8.86 inches, which is about a 25 or 30 percent... 30 percent, I'd say, increase in the number, so... Which made a tremendous difference in terms of how much storage we needed to provide. And we have provided that, and we have met that, and our entire stormwater design and the stormwater management report has been reviewed and accepted by the peer reviewer that Lisa Eggleston, that the board had hired to do this work. It meets all standards from the town and from the state. And we have something like what happened in South Carolina, just an aside. You cannot prepare... I mean, some people talked about, well, they had 20 feet of water in their yard. You can't... You can't do anything except not to build at all on that location. So you can't prepare for that. You cannot prepare for someone getting in a weekend the much rainfall as Boston's gotten in this year so far. You just can't... You can't accommodate. You can't do... You can't accommodate that. And you build something, and to accommodate that, and you go 1,000 years, 2,000 years or forever. In our entire history, we have not seen rainfall to that extent. So you just have to basically make sure that everyone is safe from that. But we're not... We're talking about accommodating the runoff from the buildings being proposed individually on each site and from the area. Now, not just the building area we're building on, but several acres upstream that we're accommodating that.
And as part of that, can you just define 100-year storm?
100-year storm is one which has a probability... predictability based on past occurrences. We can't base on whether we're going to have sunspots or whether we're going to have global warming and the seas are going to rise 10 feet, but just on the past history of record-keeping, which in this area is around 145 years, since 1870, where they've kept accurate records of, you know, the tides and the rainfall and stream flow, et cetera. And that's... 100-year storm is one that has a probability of occurring once every 100 years. It has 1 percent probability of occurring in 2016.
Right. It's the 1 percent annual chance is the other way. Yeah.
Right, that's the way I put it. As far as the water main, and I'll sit down so I don't block the whole plan, but we're tying in at... As the water main is into the Brushhill property, the condominium property, as it's tying into there, we're probably about 15, 20 feet away from the end of the Beacon Street. And that's going to be accessed through an area that's cut through here from this area. There'd be no access off of Beacon Street. It's just tying into that water main construction. It's not a huge... It's an 8-inch water main and a relatively, you know, small sloped area. It's buried 5 feet deep. It goes... Actually installs fairly quickly in these conditions. So, you know, people... A good contractor will install this in two days. So it's pretty... Pretty quick and...
Well, that's happening on the other side of the fence, is what you're saying, yeah?
Yes.
And if you'll step back, I'll see if anybody else has any further questions. Is there anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Come forward, please.
My name is Dr. Donna Jones, and I live at 207 Beacon Street, which is the end of Beacon Street. I'm writing in reference to the Brushwood Estates' construction application under consideration by the planning board today. In the last meeting, our Beacon Street community expressed concern over proposed construction in the unbuilt section of Beacon Street. It's an invisible paper road, otherwise known as my backyard, at 207 Beacon Street, which is an actual dirt pathway cutting through a budding 220 Beacon Street in the Brushwood Estates. We are separated from the estates by a cedar fence. I want to thank the efforts made by Mr. Clark, the planning board, Mr. Prondak, Alexander Whiteside, and my ever vigilant neighbors, Linda Meach, Jeff Wilkinson, and Emily, and our neighbors in the community. I was a recipient of a certified letter marked October 5th from the building commissioner stating the site work for the three single-family homes at Brushwood Estates would cease until they were given a site plan bearing an endorsement by the planning board. I also received an email from Mr. Whiteside, which described in detail the utility installation for water, sewer, gas, and electrical connections, as well as the diversion of construction vehicles rerouted to entrances through the Brushwood Estates. In addition, and much to the relief of my neighbor at 220 Beacon Street, drainage measures would be required prior to obtaining foundation permits. The property to the west of the new construction site has experienced flooding downhill from the estates, which would only be exacerbated by uprooting trees east of her property. The recent dialogue has been encouraging, and I'd like to request that the abutters of the property in the future be kept abreast of any new developments concerning the construction that would impact any further on the integrity of the environment and the value of the neighboring property. I thank you for listening. I don't have any further questions. I think it was explained pretty well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And then I see you in the back.
Thank you. Emily Speck, 84 Beacon Street Circle, which is not on the map, but is... The location should be there. I want to thank everyone involved for their patience with our community and for taking our concerns seriously and addressing them so thoroughly. I do want to just clarify, I know that it's been stated a couple times now that the tie-in will happen from the estate side, but I just want to clarify, does the water main currently go under the fence and just stop there? Or what is the current status of that water main? Because I'm not really clear on that and why it's kind of there, just hanging out.
Bill, you can answer that. Okay.
The line was put in in 1934, and it's a 12-inch line, comes out of Beacon Street, runs through that property. The majority of the 12-inch line feeds the rest of Brushwood. This project... This project is going to tap into that line, put in an eight-inch pipe that's going to go in front of the three houses, go around and tap back into the rest of that line elsewhere on the project, so that all of the, all of the water lines in that area are looped. Looping provides for, it provides for better security, better water, and ease of fixing when something breaks. It also was set up by the art engineering department, the towns engineering department. They've reviewed all of these plans. These plans have also been peer-reviewed, so you've had belt suspenders checked after these guys did their work.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, I saw you. If you still wish to speak, yeah? Come on forward.
I just want to be...
Beacon's mine, yeah.
Okay. I do want to be sure that, and I see it now, those are the trees, the beechwood trees that are at the perimeter, will be saved?
Name and address first, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the record, and then your question.
I'm sorry, I forgot. Oh, I thought you all knew me by now. Linda Meach, 188 Beacon Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to be absolutely sure those are the trees that you are planning on saving.
Okay. Just point out the trees on the plan that you...
This is, yeah, this looks like, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so we're not playing anything else.
Is that forever?
Until they come back here.
Thank you, thank you very much for your consideration and care about the trees. We need all the biomass we have in the world. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Peter Platus. I live at 333 Brush Hill Road. And I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to react to at least one thing that I heard. I lived there for eight or nine years, and I heard that we're, you know, trying to fence ourselves in and that we're, you know, really not neighborly, and I don't find that to be the case. I mean, for us to contain, to maintain control of the place, we manage it ourselves, and one of my jobs, and also to save some money, one of my jobs is to repair that famous fence. And in fact, the fence has turned out to be a way of meeting people, and I don't know if they're here necessarily, but there are some really warm feelings from the neighbors. And, you know, yes, I think it's great to specify the, these areas of concern, but I don't, it sounds like it's 100 percent against this, this community, and really, I don't find that, even though those people may not be here. So I just wanted to, to mention that in kind of a defense of, I think we're, we're good neighbors and we have good neighbors, you know?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? So if not, I'm going to turn this over to Alex. Alex volunteered, or was volunteered, I'm not sure which, to, to take over the drafting of the decision on this. So Alex, if you can walk us through the decision, I think everybody should have gotten the most recent one by email this afternoon, and...
What the decision does is say that what you've seen on the plans is what's going to be built, although there is a specific, a specific statement of the, having to do with the unbuilt section, saying there shall be no use of this unbuilt section for construction and for construction-related activities, and it shall in no event be used for access or egress from the site of the Brushwood property. So what you see on the plan is what you're going to get. I describe the renewed special permit under which this site plan approval is being granted. And then I talk about the terms and conditions, and the terms and conditions say the plans show what's going to happen. What happens is going to be shown on the plans, and if it's not shown on the plans, it's not going to happen. Talk about the site. The site plan approval concerns a portion of the Brushwood site, the portion on which these three houses will be built. The rest of the site is controlled by the site plan approval we gave some years ago. Drainage, the drainage what they've discussed is going to be what's built, and it's got to be kept in shape and working.
Could you describe, you've set it up so that the grading and drainage has to be done either prior to or concurrent with the building, the foundations? Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, well, this is just so that they don't start building the houses before they put in the drainage provisions, who simply says you can't start work on your houses. You can, you can put in the foundation, the slab on which they'll be built, because that's basically going to tie in with drainage structures, but they can't go beyond that until the drainage is installed, so as to prevent construction problems, construction drainage problems. The water main is discussed about how it will tie into the existing main and be accessed through the underground, what's called underground utility area. The gas main is shown, the electrical is shown. The new dwelling units, we have some elevations, elevations or sketches as to what the new unit's going to look at, and since this is in fact a private, I mean, it isn't a big condo development, it's a three-unit development. There is some leeway in their design, but they're going to have to tell us if they make any changes in what they have proposed, and they're going to have to come in and tell us what sort of materials they're going to use on the, on the structures. Landscaping is, we talk about no cutting of trees, the preservation of the trees shown on the plan, the protective measures for trees to be preserved, to protect them during the construction period. There will be a construction management plan, which is going to, which is going to cover all kinds of things, mandatory provisions for site access, hours of operation, deliveries, noise control, dust control, sequencing of activities, anticipated completion, and other such matters. And this will be worked out between the developer, the DPW director, and the town planner. The landscaping plan, we have a landscaping plan, we're going to get a supplemental landscaping plan to show in detail how they're going to make this development tie in with the rest of the Brushwood development. It's going to be landscaped similarly. No clear cutting. And that?
That's it.
Those are the provisions, and I think it should be a good project.
Any questions from board members? Yes, Brian?
Two questions. One is the title sheet references Kipcod Burm, and I don't see other, I don't see any other specification in the plans. I didn't see a...
If you look under driveway...
But I did see that there was, I was going to say, I saw Alex has made a provision for granite curving. I just wanted to point out that inconsistency.
Yep.
Right.
So I think Alex's permit covers it, but I just wanted to make sure we were aware there was a plan inconsistency. And I do have a question on Sheet 2. This talks about the trees that are to be preserved in accordance with Sheet 2. And I just wanted to clarify what the, the highlighted sections, highlighted trees we're referring to, there's no key on here, so...
Well, they have the, they have the inch...
I'm missing it.
They have the caliper.
I understand that. So just, just the areas around the houses where they're bubbling out the trees? Are those trees to be removed? Am I missing a key?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think...
Trees to be removed? Okay, I see. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. I didn't see the note.
Mike, any questions?
Nope.
So on the construction management plan, once that is done, will it be on file in the planning office? Okay, so anybody who has any questions on the construction management plan would contact you. We did have one resident ask that the abutters be kept informed of any construction activities. Can we make sure that the construction plan has a method of doing that? Whether we collect email addresses and it's sent out? I think we did that with 36 Central. Is their construction manager sent out, or was at least going to send out, regular emails? So can...
The lawyer did that.
The lawyer did that. Okay, so can, when, when you get together with the developer and the DPW director, make sure that there's a provision for informing people of major construction activities or changes? That would be the other thing, if they come to us for any changes, that the neighborhood is also informed that that will happen. So, yes. Let's all hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Chair Jeff Wilkinson, 199 Beacon Street. Just for the sake of clarity, I wonder if you could say a little bit more about the trees? I'm concerned there may not be a clear understanding among some of the neighbors. My, my understanding and looking at the, at Page 2, it appears there's at least one tree at the end of Beacon Street that may be cut for the, for the tie-in, but I'm not sure I'm reading that right. But I remember, I mean, in, in communication with Mr. Whiteside, my understanding was that it might be required that a tree might have to come down as they tie into that water main. If that's the case, I think it'd be important for us to understand that this evening so that people don't walk out of here with the impression that no tree is being cut.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a very good point.
Bill, can...
Yes, Bill, if you can explain. I see the hand.
Right now, on the plan that you have, you see a 60-inch?
Yes.
That 60-inch tree has already fallen. It broke during a storm at some point, so that it's lying partially over the fence, partially into the parzillo's land, and partially onto the unbuilt portion. The plan is not to have to take down any trees. The whole plan on this whole project is to be able to potentially take the road, and if we can wiggle it to the right, wiggle it to the left, so that we can save a tree, I've already taken and discussed this...
What road?
The new drive coming in.
Oh, okay.
If we can take and wiggle that some, we're going to, to save whatever trees are there. As we take and put in the underground utility area, if we have to wiggle it to move a tree, to save a tree, we'll move it a little bit to save the tree.
Okay.
And there is a tree right in the middle of the, it isn't shown here, but there is a tree.
So we'll pull in a little bit and they'll cut it off the tree.
It's right on the, right on the border, but that tree is going nowhere.
Not going anywhere.
Okay. So, so just to clarify, on this plan, you have some trees around the houses that have the little bubbles around them. Those are going?
Those are going.
Okay, you've got some...
Actually, some of them may even be able to stay. They're, if we can slide the house afoot to save a tree, they'll, they'll work to try to do that.
So if there's no bubble around it, the tree is staying.
The tree is going to stay.
If there is a bubble around it, it may be taken down, but we're hoping not to.
Yes.
And that is also consistent with those that are at the top end of the underground utility area. The 60-inch caliper tree is staying where it is in a fallen position, being removed from where it is? Something like that? Hang on.
That's a condo association question, not mine.
That is not a town planner question. Okay. And then there's another tree in the vicinity of that 60-inch that is not marked on the map that is staying?
We're going to make it.
Is there a name?
We're not going to try, we're trying not to take down any trees whatsoever along that beach line there.
Okay. Does that answer the question about trees?
That's the guess.
Okay.
I do have one more question.
Okay, yes, fire away.
One other question on drainage, is there, I tried to see it, but I don't see a reference to an operation and maintenance manual. Will there be one on file? And if there's not, we probably should have a condition for that.
Okay.
We can put that in the construction management plan.
It will be, but...
Will that, will the construction management plan survive afterward with special permit? It won't, right? I want, it should be a condition that goes forward.
I think we required that for the St. Pius site, didn't we, in operations and maintenance on that?
You really need it for a system of this cap...
We'll have it forwarded to the condo association.
What's that?
The operation and maintenance plan...
It should be on file with the town as well.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's the only...
So we're going to add that to drainage?
Yes.
Okay.
You're going to add it as the...
Yes, so on drainage, which is Page 2, add as a condition that there be an operations and maintenance plan.
Which will be adhered to.
Yes, and which will be adhered to by the condo association.
Okay, so we say there...
There shall be.
Shall be an operations and maintenance plan.
Manual.
Manual or plan?
Yeah. This, this structure will probably have...
And is that self-explanatory?
I think so. It should just be on file with the building department or with the town.
Enforced by the conversation.
Operation and maintenance manual controlling drainage.
The infiltration system.
Yeah, correct.
Controlling drainage.
Infiltration system.
Controlling the infiltration system.
You're not, you're not going to have one for the pipe that runs to it?
Yeah, it's really just for the...
Make sure this doesn't gum up.
It has for, so it's only for the infiltration system?
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
Is that right, Bill?
Yes.
For the infiltration system?
Yes. I could've said stormwater management system.
Yeah, that's, I'm wondering if that's a better, sorry, Alex, but I'm wondering if you say...
You want to have a stormwater management?
Instead of, no, instead...
Storm, for the stormwater management system instead of the infiltration system.
For the stormwater...
Stormwater management system.
This, today, I could probably call up a people producer and they'd send me a...
For the stormwater management system.
Yes.
And the manual shall be...
Kept on file at the planning office.
Okay.
And enforced by the condo association.
The, shall be an operation and maintenance manual for the stormwater management system and the manual with which there shall be compliance, the manual be, with which there shall be compliance.
You're getting to see drafting and work, at work, everyone.
The manual shall be on file with the town planner.
And we need to have something about the condo association enforcing it.
I think the town should issue Alex a PC.
Okay, with which there shall be compliance by the condominium association.
Yes.
The type's low, I get to.
Shall be on file with the town planner. Is that the right place, Bill, for it? Bill?
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to read this.
What number you want?
This is at the end of 3, drainage.
Thank you.
There shall be an operation or shuns?
Shuns.
Operation.
Operation and maintenance manual for the stormwater management system with which there shall be compliance by the condominium association. The manual shall be on file with the town planner.
Excellent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other changes that anybody would like to make going through this?
Uh-uh.
All right. All right. Any other comments, questions?
Wording, so we can replicate it.
Well, maybe we should give it to, okay, are you going to just...
I'll do it.
Okay, that's good.
Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I believe that we approved the site plan approval decision that...
As modified.
As amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So we can sign, we're just going to change that page. We can sign the last...
Last page and...
The last page, if we have some last pages.
I have a last page. Do you have a last page? I don't have a blue pen, though, because I think I'm...
I have a blue pen. I'm not sure if they're going to be able to format it that. Do you think you're going to be able to do it?
Oh, you think it'll push the format off?
No, it can...
It'll fit.
Does it matter which one it is?
I am confident.
Confident we can squish that text down a little bit?
Change the margins.
All right, sounds good. Sounds good.
Do you have a...
I have a signature page.
You have double-sided?
I have single-sided.
Perfect. Pass that down to Mike.
Okay. Might even have a second single-sided. Do we have three single-sided?
Eighty-three?
Don't have to worry about it.
Thank you.
Brian?
Yep.
Thank you all very much for coming. We appreciate your participation.
Yep.
All right, Thayer Nursery. So, just to recap where we are, we had begun our deliberations on the order of conditions that would be for Thayer Nursery. We have left sort of the two biggest ones, the ones that have had the most amount of public comment and back and forth on new proposals for today. And that is the fencing and the drainage. So I want to make sure that we start with those two items and work our way through. And then Tim had taken all of our comments from the last meeting and worked them into the text. So you should have a new draft order of conditions that was in your packet with the comments. So I figure after we talk about fencing and the drainage, we can go back through. And then where I'm hoping we will get to tonight is a sense from the four of us, who are the four that can vote on this. And for those who have been watching, a special permit requires four members to vote positively. So I'm hoping at the end of the night, we either know that we are going to vote in favor or we're going to have one or more people voting against. And then I have direction from...
Open next to copy that.
Directions from the board to either work on a draft decision in favor with Tim or a draft decision against with Tim. So let's see where we go in our discussions on the drainage and the fencing. So fencing starts on Page 12. It's partway down, landscaping and fencing. And what Tim did was pull from all of the different sources we received over this public hearing, the various proposals. So obviously, Thayer Nursery has made a proposal, and we had a site walk of how they would do the fencing. We have also heard from the abutters as to their preference on the fencing. So Tim pulled all of that. And I think throughout this, there have been questions from members of the board, too, on how the fencing would go. So I'm interested to hear from you on that. And then Kay also goes over to the next page, on Page 13. And then there's some comments there that Tim and I had passed back and forth on mitigation and how that would work. So have a look and give me your thoughts.
Quick point of order. I have, my page numbers aren't matching yours.
Oh, maybe I pulled the wrong one. What do you have a page number for? I have the draft, says last updated September 29th by TC at the front page?
No, I don't have that.
Okay. Make sure we're all working off the same draft, so it'll say...
I'm sure I have it right here. I do have it right here.
Okay. Mike, Alex, you're working with the same draft.
I've worked for the other one, but I think it's the same. Tim is getting me another copy.
Okay, great. Okay, excellent. So, yeah, have a quick look, and then tell me what you're thinking on this.
So we're on landscaping and fencing.
Landscaping and fencing, yes. And there were also, just to remind everyone, there were requirements in the zoning itself about landscaping and fencing. So whatever we approve should be consistent with that. Or if we're waiving any of that for any reason, we need to make a note of why we're waiving it.
Are we going to try to do that comparison relationship right here?
We can do. Or you can let me know what you're thinking. We can come to an agreement, and then I can go back and just double-check. I've got the zoning in front of me, so...
Well, I mean, there's no requirement for a fence.
There's requirement for landscaping. So it says, you're correct that the fence, there's no requirement for a fence, but it says fences and walls, it says specifications, and this is E. Let me tell you which number E, so we all know.
Four.
Four E, thank you. "Specifications for all fences, walls, and sound buffering landscape structures shall be part of this plan. Fences and walls shall be at least 15 feet from lot lines, and landscaping shall at a minimum be provided in the area within 30 feet of lot lines." And goes on to talk about the position of the driveway. So again, it doesn't say you have to have a fence, but if you do have a fence, this is where it has to be located, so...
And at the beginning, it says that fences have to be appropriately sited and incorporated into attractive setting and landscape with vegetation on both sides.
Yes, thank you.
Well, I'm prepared to offer a few thoughts.
Please, go ahead.
It seems to me that the critical elements of this plan, thank you, are the fence and the drainage. And I think that the fence is critical for noise. And it has to be, it has to be sited to best minimize the noise. And I'm a little unclear. I mean, I, it was initially, there was sort of a thought of a 10-foot fence on top of a wall, which was at the bottom of a one- or two-foot grade. And it seemed to me that when they came back and said an eight-foot fence should do it, then an eight-foot fence would be fine if it were on top of the grade running down to the wall. Because you basically get an extra foot or two right there. And that's sort of where that line of evergreen trees is.
You're talking about the rear property line at this point?
The rear property line.
Yes.
I mean, the Lepore line is more or less a level, a level. I mean, there is no, there's no grade.
There's no, yeah, there's no significant, right.
There's no grade. I mean, I, the specifications for the fence with the knotted wire that they talk about seems, seems okay. The question is the sound buffering material. If you put a, unless, without the sound buffering material, you might as well just put in a six-foot fence.
Right.
If the sound buffering is only six feet high, what's the point of having, you know, an extra two feet of opening, other than to keep the deer from making them jump a little higher? And it does seem to me that if we're talking about an eight-foot fence, we really need to, we really need to get that sound buffering up to the top of it.
So you have a comment, Bill, on that?
Yeah, the last time they talked about fence, they said they were going to put up the eight-foot fence with eight feet of sound attenuating material. It comes in four-and-a-half-foot rolls.
Yeah, well, they talked about it. They said they could do it one of two different orientations. They could do eight feet with one on the top, one on the middle. They could do, they could do a six-foot-high run.
With two feet at the bottom.
They were recommending the six-foot run based on their...
They came back at one of the last meetings and said that there was a, they found a material that they can use that actually has, it's the same stuff. They just have, it comes in a roll. It's four-and-a-half feet by whatever the thing is long. So they're going to have a pole at the, you're going to have the posts, you're going to have a pipe going between those at the top, and there'll be another one in the middle. So they'll take one four-and-a-half-foot sheet, start it from the ground to the four-and-a-half-foot mark. They'll take the other one from the top, and it'll come down. So you've got two four-and-a-half-foot sheets overlapping. So there's a six-inch overlap on both sheets.
So it would end up being the eight feet?
Eight feet with an overlap.
May I have the, so I had the same question. My question on this all was the orientation of the sound attenuation, because I had the same question that Alex did. So if you're getting eight feet of coverage...
I know that we talked about that because we said they were going to take input, they were going to screw it to the posts, the wooden posts, and there's a plastic washer that goes into it to hold it in place. By having the flap there, it actually lets the air out, so it doesn't become a sail.
Which was a concern that we'd had on earlier conversations, that we didn't want it becoming a sail, so...
So it's overlapping itself, so if the sound hitting the flap, it's dying in the flap and going down anyways.
And I think that the fact that, even though you could have a nine-foot fence, it does seem to me if you're putting four feet into the ground, they don't make these things in 13-foot lengths. And what...
The posts.
Right. Yeah, and the other, if you're going to have two panels, then I think they should overlap, because otherwise you run the risk of having one panel going one. I don't think the sound would work. I think you'd have the gap happen. If you try and do exactly four-and-a-half feet to exactly four-and-a-half feet to make a nine-foot fence, it's not going to work.
And the reason, the reason they were avoiding with the other roll, they were avoiding running six, you know, the sections, was they were trying to minimize the number of seams.
Right, exactly. And having a continuous roll makes...
You have a seam, but it's overlapped, which is, I'm not speaking as an expert, I'm guessing, I'm interpreting the way you're saying it.
Same thing, yeah, exactly. Not speaking as an expert, but just using common sense.
Right.
You know, buddying it up is not going to work as well.
You have one seam, but at least it's overlapped.
Yeah, exactly.
This has to be rewritten to incorporate that.
Right, it would be. So, so then what I'm hearing is that, starting at least on the side property line, the one that abuts up to the Lepore property line, we're looking at that eight-foot-high steel fence with the overlapping four-and-a-half, four-and-a-half. Does that sound right? Okay, so then we turn the corner, and now we're talking about the rear property line.
Landscape on both sides.
Landscape on both sides, yes, exactly, as per the zoning. So then we've turned the corner, and now we're talking about the rear property line. We've got the corner turned. We're going along the Tevens line. My understanding was the proposal, again, was same eight-foot fence at this point, running along the overlap. Then we come to that berm as we come up to the Joe Henning Row property line. And the idea, as I understand it, is the fence goes up on top of the berm, so it is now, it's still an eight-foot fence, but it's another, was it a foot and a half high? Another two feet high on that berm? Do, I thought it was a foot and a half.
The topography there runs downhill.
And it runs down. So you've got the berm, you had that swale, and then the topography itself is running down, so...
So the...
The fence is staying, yes, the same level.
The stone wall is at 182.
Okay.
And about two, I can't, I don't have the scale, but then it pretty quickly goes to 184, probably, I would say, within two to 10 feet of the wall, and then gets up to 186, and then stays pretty consistent at 186.
Okay. So that eight-foot fence is running along the top of the stone wall. Is that consistent with what you all understood as a proposal?
No, it's running on top of the embankment, which is above the stone wall. The stone wall...
That's right, embankment above, thank you.
The stone wall, I mean, if they build up the stone wall two feet to bring it to grade...
Right.
But I don't think they want to do that. I think...
They told us we're out there walking.
The base of the hemlocks is the top of the wall.
It isn't the top of the wall now.
It's going to be.
And they're going to put...
The same elevation number.
Well, let's just think about this. They're going to put the post into a wall?
Behind the wall.
On the Thayer side of the wall, not the Joe Henning Row side of the wall.
So they're going to build a retaining...
They're putting it closer to the nursery.
They're going to build a retaining wall.
Yes. No, the wall is already there. They're making the wall two feet higher. It's going to be one foot up to two feet. It's, it's the same elevation as the bottom of the hemlocks is now.
Right, right. Which is the elevation that it should be at, but it's, it's got to be high. I mean, if they really want to build, do they really want to build this wall?
Well, I guess, yeah, I mean, what he's...
No.
So what you're saying is you're going to be at 184.
Yes.
With the bottom, with the top of the wall.
Yes.
That's what the hemlocks are at now, is at 184.
Okay, so the wall will be built up...
Makes the wall go up about two feet in the middle, right?
That's right.
Yes.
Okay.